Okay, alright, you got it? Okay, yeah, now it's there. Okay, welcome everyone. My name is Krishna Bansal. I'm the chairman of Indian Community Outreach, a program that was instigated by city of Naperville in 2013 with the motive of education, integration, and empowering our, all our communities together. As you know, Indian community is a growing community, and last 20 years it has increased to be more than 10% of the city's population. Most of the Indian Americans that have immigrated to Naperville, they are first-generation immigrants, they are highly educated, they are really, I mean, they're primarily involved in businesses and are professionals, and they really care about education and how we live here. First of all, I'd like to recognize the Indian Community Outreach team members who have helped to put together this session. So can I ask the Indian Community Outreach team members to please stand up and be recognized? Thank you. I'd like to, there are so many of our elected officials out here who have made time to come, and they serve to make our city more beautiful, our communities more vibrant, so that we can have best of our lives that we are here for in Naperville. So can I ask our elected officials and the candidates who are running for any local position or any position to please stand up and be recognized? And we know our candidates were sitting at the city council forum, they all are candidates, and as well as a few of them are already serving on a council and other positions. So thank you for what you do. I'd like to thank all our volunteers who are here and who have been helping to put everything together. We are going to introduce them later. At this point, let me introduce why we are here for. We started with an informal session with police chief and mayor. Indian Community Outreach, one of the objectives is to build education. We have been doing this via platform which is called Conversations. What that means is getting together, either we have moderated forum, town hall, or informal get-togethers. This is our third forum in the series for this year. We have been looking at civic issues, how do we get civic, involved in a civic, non-political of course, civic issues when I say, we are looking at the social and the community issues. We are going to be having more and more of these sessions. Our plan is to have one session every other month, but I think we are already exceeding that, and we are going to be having at least 10 to 12 sessions this year. And we'll be looking forward for all of your participation as well as involvement as we go along. So today's session is part of the series, part of the civic awareness, part of how do we get involved, and part of knowing our candidates who run the city or who will be responsible for making policies for our city. We heard from mayor, but I'll, we like to hear from these candidates to see what they can do for us. We'll encourage you to ask questions. I'll, at this point, like to introduce our moderators of the forum, who are going to be moderating, that they are going to go through the rules and explain how things will follow. So let me welcome Vandana Jhingan, who's a TV show host. Vandana, can you please stand up? And we recognize Vandana Jhingan, a TV show host, and as well as a community activist. Thank you Vandana, what you do. Second, we have Viral Shah. He is, he has been part of our team from very beginning, working tirelessly to make a community better place. So thank you Viral and Vandana. And at this point, I'll hand over the mic to Vandana, to please take over and explain us how the forum is going to go through, and Viral to explain us the rule. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Krishna mentioned, we've been talking about the forum, why the need of this? If not this, then what? First of all, thank you each and every one of you, those who are here. We've been doing, as Indians, making a lot of presence here in Naperville around, I mean, when we talk about Chicagoland area, it's a time for us to get engaged also. 2016 has seen where the people of Indian origin has made their niche even for the highest offices also. But we go up, first we start from the ground. Krishna said like we'll do one in two months, but this is three in one month. Every week we are going and talking to people. People do have concerns, and we are looking for answers from you. And also, to the people, those who could make it, or those who are not here, I want to say thank you. And when we too, we are here, Viral and Vandana, we start with we. So questions, what we have, we'll be asking more even from the people also, because this is not for us, this is all for them. And we are doing it for them, Krishnaji. And Indian Community Outreach, when we talk about name speaks for itself. We educate, we integrate, and empower. I wish you all the best and good luck to each and everyone, and I'll give it to Viral now.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the 2017 City Council Candidates Forum. My name is Viral Shah. And as a board member, and on behalf of ICO, I welcome the audience, and I welcome the candidates to this afternoon's forum. For the next two hours, our goal is to understand our candidates, who are vying to represent us in the upcoming elections in April. I will start off by introducing each candidate, and they will spend two minutes introducing themselves, followed by two questions that they will have a minute and a half to answer. These two questions have been prepared by ICO and provided to the candidates. Following the two questions, we'll turn to the questions that have been provided by the audience. Index cards and pens are available, and our volunteers are walking around to grab the questions if you've not already submitted them. We have our ICO prescreeners to review the questions before asking the candidates to ensure that they fit the guidelines, as well as they're not repetitious in nature. For each of the questions from the audience, the candidates will have about a minute to answer. When there are 30 seconds left from that one minute or two minutes or minute and a half, my colleague is gonna raise up the yellowboard, and once your time's up, it's gonna flip over to red. At least this way it'll get, give everybody a gauge, and I'm trying to be as fair to everyone as possible. If you continue to blow past your timeline, then I will have to interject. I'm trying to be nice. The sequence in which the candidates will introduce themselves as well as answer the questions is random. It's like a Sudoku puzzle that I have right here, so I didn't make this up. It was somewhere online that I found it. We can blame them if you don't like the sequencing. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience to silence your cellphones if you've not already done so, that much, much appreciated. And if there are no more questions on the format, let us begin. Alright, so the first introduction is gonna be with Ms. Broadhead.
Thank you to the Indian Community Outreach for this opportunity. I'm Judy Broadhead. I've been on the city council since 2009. I was re-elected in 2013 and 2015. I wanna move Naperville further along in its role as a 21st century city, even though we have grown to a city of 150,000 people or very close to it. We're one of the most desirable communities in the entire country to live and to work in. In our recent community satisfaction survey, 94% of our residents were happy with the way the city is currently being run. I can continue to help Naperville be the place that's an excellent one to live, work, and invest in for everyone, one that wins dozens of accolades and matures into a city that is a safe and productive place to live or run a business, whether you have a young family, you're a millennial, an empty nester, or a senior.
Mr. Coyne?
Sure. Thank you, and thank you to ICO for having, having us today and organizing this forum. My name's Kevin Coyne, I'm an incumbent city councilman running for my second term. Very proud of the work that we've done over the past two years. Our city's clearly become stronger financially. We've maintained our AAA bond rating, we've reduced debt, we've reduced our tax levy, and our utilities have gotten stronger. Our financial future has become brighter over the past two years. We focused a great deal on economic development. We've landed a number of new businesses, Shervon being one, but many other businesses in the downtown area, businesses that will bring jobs and amenities and diversify and strengthen our tax base in town here. Jobs will be brought, jobs for our children. And we've made Naperville or kept Naperville very safe. We continue to be, by most crime metrics, one of the safest cities in America by any measure, clearly of our size. And we've been a leader in the, in the fight against heroin. We need to keep Naperville safe and strong, and our city council's done that, and I'm committed to making sure that we continue to do that over the next four years. I am the father of a first-grade daughter at Scott School. I'm, I have a long-term incentive to, to make decisions that are built with the long-term objectives in mind, not political expediency. Want to make sure she grows up in the safe, excellent community that we've all enjoyed. So in the next term, I will continue to take action to keep our community safe and strong, to bring businesses to Naperville, and to keep Naperville on a very sound and strong financial path. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher?
It is, it is going to be random, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank the Indian Outreach Committee for giving us the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Kevin Gallagher. I'm a 27-year resident of Naperville. My oldest son is 26-years-old, and he's currently teaching middle school in Minnesota, so I've already kinda had one generation come through. I'm also the father of eight-year-old twins. They're in third grade at Elmid School here in Naperville. So I am very proud of Naperville's past, and I am very eager to represent Naperville's future, since I've been part of both with my kids. This is my second time around on the city council. I was first elected to the city council in 1995 and served from 1995 until 2002. At that time, Naperville was experiencing tremendous growth. In fact, when I was first elected, Naperville had just crossed a population of 100,000, and we now have almost 150,000. So in the last 25 almost years that I've served in some capacity in Naperville, we've almost built a small, a small town of 50,000 people. And I'm very proud of the work that was done back then, because we built a tremendous community, a community that's one of the most, that's almost always rated one of the top places to retire in, one of the top places to raise a family, one of the top places to have your children attend school. And as Councilwoman Broadhead mentioned, 94% of the people in our most recent survey stated that they are satisfied with the standard of living here in Naperville. Councilman Coyne tough, touched on some of the difficult financial questions that we had to tackle over the last two years, because coming out of the recession, our finances were not where we wanted them to be. But in that time, we've continued to have a balanced budget, we've reduced the amount of debt that we have, and all of the things that we did, although they were very difficult decisions to make, resulted in the ratings agencies reaffirming Naperville's AAA bond rating. So I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this afternoon, and I look forward to talking with you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Crummon?
Thank you. My turn. I'm a mechanical engineer, I'm also an adjunct professor of economics and finance. So I've got, I'm a numbers guy. In my career, I've also been the global program manager for Tata Consulting. We converted a diesel, a Freightliner diesel engine over to natural gas. We heard it just before, in the mayor and the police chief's comments, we talked about, sorry, I'm a little too close to the mic. We talked about trust. A couple of years back, smart meter was, was the big topic, and I'm a very pro-smart meter, I've been chairman of the Public Utility Advisory Board. And when a lady came up to Mayor Pradel at the time and said, George, why are you letting these things hurt our children? And again, as an engineer, I had the technical facts, and as a finance person, I had the financial facts. And I just happened to be standing there, and I looked at George, and I thought, George, just, just, just give me the nod, and I'll, I'll avalanche her with data and information. And, and he just looked at her, and he said, Mary, would I let anything bad happen to our children? And Mary looked at him and said, no, George, no you wouldn't. And what I learned from that experience, and it stuck with me for many years, is, is I have the data, I have the facts, I have the, the experience and the education. But what Mary was looking for was trust. And that's what I think is lacking right now. We lack it in our national politics, we not lack it in our state politics. But I would say if 94% of the community is, is satisfied with Naperville, and I've served, I'm an incumbent, and I served with Judy, Kevin, and Kevin, I, I hope we have earned your trust, and I think we've done a pretty good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julie Berkowitz. Thank you very much for hosting us today. We really appreciate your time, and thank you to the audience who took the time out of their busy days to come and meet with us today. My husband Walter and I have lived in Naperville for 22 years. We've raised our three sons here. We've been very involved in the community. We've been in Boy Scouts for 22 years, and I'm proud to say that all three of my sons are Eagle Scouts, and we've enjoyed the whole experience. That also has allowed us to work with hundreds of youths and their parents and their siblings, and it's so reward, rewarding. I am also on our homeowners association. I live in Knack Knowles. I volunteered for, I've been on it about 18 years. With that position, I get the opportunity to work with city staff. I work with forestry permitting, zoning. It's been a very rewarding, and it's made me very knowledgeable of the vast responsibilities that our government has to provide all these excellent services. I am also, I love culture, I embrace diversity, and Naperville has the best. We are so welcoming, and our opportunities are exciting. I am also on the Sambanga Bee Filipino Choir, so I love doing that. And my family and I hope to enjoy many, many years here in Naperville, and I would love the opportunity to continue to serve the citizens on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Isaac. I appreciate you guys hosting today. You know, when somebody asks why you're running for council, there's a multitude of different answers. But really, as I look down on why I'm running for council, it's to prepare us for the future. I'm a 13-year resident of Naperville. I've lived on the south side of Naperville off 111th and 59, and we've recently, over the last couple of years, moved to the north side of Naperville. And in this, I've been exposed quite frankly to all of Naperville. I am excited, because one of my best roles in life is a father of twin three-year-olds. And as I look at my three-year-olds, I wonder, how are we gonna prepare Naperville for when they are graduating from college and they want to come back to Naperville? In addition, how are we gonna prepare Naperville to when they want to raise their family here and become grandparents as well? This is really done through prudent planning, a lot of intelligence, and a lot of hard work. The city of Naperville is a great place to live, but the question is, how do you sustain this, and how do you change with some of the market demands? I think it's important that we understand that over the last several years, we live differently than we did 10 years ago. I want to be a part of that next generation of leaders that is looking forward to 10 years, 20 years, in making the applicable changes that we need to make. If you look back at how we even shopped several years ago, we shopped differently. We communicate differently. I remember 10, 15 years ago, there was no such thing as a cellphone in your hand that you could simply text somebody. So we changed the way we have communicated, the change where we live. We also need to make sure our community changes at the exact same time as well. And I am excited to be a part of the next generation of leaders, and I want to be a part of that discussion for next several years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Strick?
Thank you. My name is Mike Strick, and I would like to represent you on the city council and ask for your vote on April 4th. My wife and I have been blessed to raise our three children here for 25 years. We have all had so many opportunities in Naperville. All three of my children grew up and went to our fantastic schools. They've excelled, and I want to see them come back to Naperville and raise their families. I am an immigrant. I came to this country when I was five-years-old, and I had to learn the language. I can understand what it's like to come from a foreign country and adapt. Can you imagine a five-year-old speaking German with a southern accent? My wife and I both grew up in a single-parent home, so we appreciate community. We saw and experienced many hardships. I grew up in Chicago, and my wife Paula grew up in Aurora. I started to work at a very young age. I had a paper route, and I grew that route into one of the largest for the Southwest News Herald. I had the drive to succeed at a very young age. My wife and I both worked while we were in college at NIU. We have instilled that work ethic into our children, and all of our kids have worked while attending college. I graduated with a Bachelor of Sciences degree in biology, and use that in working in the hazardous waste disposal industry. My wife is an OR nurse. As a family man, immigrant, community member, and business owner, I would appreciate your vote on April 4th.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you to the ICO for inviting me and having us all here today. I'd like to let you know a little bit about myself. My name is Benny White. And what I am, I'm a husband. I've been married to this lovely lady out in the audience, it'll be 30 years in July. I'm also a dad. I have two children, 25 and 20, they've both have excelled here in Naperville. I'm a soldier. I've been in the Army, I've served 22 years in the military. I've done my service for my country. I'm also an educator, I, I teach adjunct, I'm an adjunct professor at Benedictine University, also teach at the high school level. I am a mentor, and I'm a community member here in Naperville. Why am I running? Well, when I moved here to Naperville, I was selected to command ROTC at Wheaton College, and in doing so, I had to figure out a place where I wanted to live. And every time we've, we've moved, which is, we've moved every two to three years, by the way, we look for a community that offers a great school environment and great, safe place to live, and the safe community, I mean, the community overall, that just offers so much from a restaurant standpoint and just activities. Naperville fits that bill. My time at the United States Military Academy at West Point has prepared me for a life of service. I've been, again, 22 years in the Army, I've also been on the Board of Education in Indian Prairie 204 where I currently serve, and I am also on the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, where I have an opportunity to hire the best firemen and police folks here in this city of Naperville. What do I plan on doing? Taxes. We all talk about taxes, and we need to lower our taxes. I think through fiscal responsibility and economic development, we can do that. I think affordable and tangible housing for our young families and for our seniors is paramount to something that we need to be looking at here in Naperville. Youth engagement and senior engagement is something that I'm very interested in looking at, as well as we engage some of the problems and challenges that are facing those particular demographics. Traffic and transportation, when we looked at our, our survey, our city survey, we discovered that was the number-one issue here in Naperville, was the traffic situation. And public safety, I want to keep Naperville as one of the safest cities here in the United States. Thanks again for inviting me, and I look forward to the rest of the forum.
Thank you so much. At this point, I would like to request the audience, if you have your questions ready, when you have your questions ready, please raise your hands, and our volunteers will come out and collect them from you. The first question to the, to the candidates. Economic affordability to live in the city of Naperville has two ends of the spectrum. One is affordability for the seniors, who have lived here most of their lives, and on the flip side, is the younger population, which is not enough in infusing within the city itself. This has resulted in the current average age of the population in Naperville to go up. What are some initiatives that you would support or bring to the table that would keep the city attractive for younger population, including modernization of the city itself, and at the same time continuing for it to be affordable? The first, the question is for all the candidates. Mr. Gallagher, you go first. And you have 90 seconds.
Thanks very much. So the question is, how do we keep young people here in Naperville? And I think there's really two things that we need to do. First of all, and I think we do an outstanding job with this, is we need to have a first-class education system here in Naperville. And school districts 203 and school districts 204, both do an outstanding job of educating our children. We're also fortunate to have North Central College located here in Naperville, and we have a number of other universities located not very far, whether it be Aurora University, Wheaton College, Benedictine University. We have DePaul University in Northern Illinois that also have a presence here in Naperville. And they're providing first-class education for the children, young people that, that live here in Naperville. So once they get a great education, the next thing we have to do is make sure that we have a substantial job base for them, so that they can be employed. And when I say job base, I'm not talking just in Naperville, because we live in the greater Chicago area. So one of the things we need to do is make sure that Chicago remains a strong economic engine, because we have thousands of people that rely on Chicago and the surrounding communities to have a strong job base. So those are two of the things that I think need to be done. The third thing is, we need to maintain a diverse housing base, so that there are opportunities for our young people to purchase a home here. Now, what is a diverse housing base? That seems to change over time, and millennials have a different opinion. But as a city council, we're working very carefully to make sure that we're on top of what those trends are.
Thank you. Ms. Berkowitz?
Thank you. One of the ways to attract our younger generation and keep them in Naperville would be to continue to provide new activities and businesses in the city. For example, iFly, they absolutely love that. I'm a little too old to do anything like that, but I've heard a lot of good, excited responses about that type of an activity. Increasing that environment in Naperville will attract and retain our younger generation, our young adults. We also need to continue to bring new businesses and also attract additional corporations to provide the jobs that can anchor them here. A lot of corporations have downsized, so we have a little bit of ground to make up. Also, by increasing the businesses and filling some of the empty commercial space, that will increase our sales tax and our tax receipts. That will also reduce the burden on all citizens in Naperville and for our taxpayers. So those are the, some, some of the ways to retain and also attract new members in the younger generation. And one final note, by providing more housing that is styled for that generation, and also at the price they can afford, that would spark a lot of new life in Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strick?
Thank you. As, as I've walked the neighborhoods canvassing these many areas, I, I run into a lot of seniors out there. And these seniors look at me and say, Mike, why, why are my, why are my electric rates going up three-and-a-half percent? Why are my water rates going up three-and-a-half percent? Why in the past did I have my garbage picked up for free, and now I'm paying $25? And, and I look at these, these older people that are living on Social Security, and, and their, their Social Security is not going up. There's a big concern with the seniors that it's becoming unaffordable for them as well in, in the city. As far as our youth, our education is exceptional. Many, many corporations come to Naperville and say, okay, you went to District 204, District 203, what a great school system. They go to these other universities, generally out of the state, and they get their education. My son is an electrical engineer, highly sought-after guy. So he moved out of Naperville and went up to Auburn Hills and is working for Fiat Chrysler. I miss him. I wish he was closer. I wish we had the manufacturing here in Illinois, and I wish we had the ability and the companies that need his skill, so that he would have stayed, he would stay here. So we have a mass migration of not only companies leaving Illinois, but our, our smart youth, and I really wish that we can engage these companies to stay in, in the area and stay in Naperville, and hire our young, educated people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Broadhead?
Thank you. As, as we approach build-out, we don't see the rapid infusion of young families that we did, where nearly 50,000 people were added to the city between, say, 1985 and the, the early 2000s. There's just, isn't going to be room for that kind of growth. But what has happened is, those people who may have come in, perhaps in their late twenties, early thirties, have stuck around, because it's such a good community. It's not necessarily what we expected. And then we had the recession, and millennials start thinking differently about how everything works. They wait longer to marry, they wait longer to have children, they don't necessarily think buying a house is something they should do when they're in their twenties or early thirties. Sometimes they want places that don't have much maintenance. In the years before they have children, at least, they spend some money on entertainment, they're looking for interest- They're looking for interesting and fun restaurants and other things to do in the area. They like outdoor recreation as well as work out in gyms. And these are things that we do have to offer. The business community is also extremely interested in attracting millennials. And I think we can do some things with our housing, including allowing granny flats or millennial flats within a single-family house or allowing smaller units to be built within larger, single-family communities that would be attractive to that population.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne?
Thank you. I believe as elected officials, our number-one duty up here is to position our city such that it allows for a bright future for the next generation. And I think we fail at that mission if we build a city that our young people can no longer afford to live in. How do you accomplish that? It's tough when you're in a city that's popular. It is largely built out and the price of real estate is high. So what can we do? This morning, I hosted a forum for seniors that discussed that very question. And I think there are a number of things that we can do. I think we have to be more open-minded to denser projects, provided those projects are not unduly burdensome on surrounding neighborhoods. You can't have every new project be million-dollar homes. And we've seen more than our fair share of those types of developments in Naperville. We have to get on top of real estate taxes and prioritize that issue. We've done our part on that, as to that, on City Council. Our tax levy has gone down 15% over the past two years. We need to continue to partner and push for tax reductions, not only in our diocese, but in partnering with other government offices locally. And we need to make sure that affordability is a major factor when we're looking at what developments to recruit in Naperville and ultimately approve. We need to stop giving lip service to the question of affordability and make sure it's a high-priority issue that we really strictly adhere to and prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Yes, we have, as far as I'm concerned, we need to have the vision that we really want to bring our younger generation back here to Naperville. In other words, we need to kind of grow our own. What we need to recognize is that the vast majority of college graduates will come back and live within 22 miles of where they grew up. So how do we do that? We've got to be able to bring in businesses here that will attract younger people. When there's businesses here, they understand that there's places that they can go and work. So I think that's one thing that would definitely help us out. I think the next thing we need to take a look at is maybe an entertainment district that's attractive to some of our younger generation. Something that would involve having restaurants, having condos, things that they can buy that's at an affordable rate. I think that would be an awesome thing for them to consider. We just need to take a look at how we, we're going to, how the transportation system's going to look for our younger generation. They don't look at driving like we do, okay? A lot of them, the Uber is big now. They're going to be sharing rides, maybe taking the train or whatever it is. They want to have access to the train station. So we need to kind of look at that, look into the future and see how that would help us in that regard. And finally, I would like to see us establish relationships with some of our young nonprofit organizations that serve younger folks in our high schools. How about at the beginning of a city council meeting, we get a three-minute report from one of the local high schools as far as what's going on in their particular school? So we all stay informed. And when they feel that they're part of the government, there's going to be more buy-in and hopefully we, those, you know, they'll come in, they'll want to be involved with Naperville as far as someday being up here on the diocese as a councilman or mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac?
Thank you. So I spoke about this a second ago during my bio, but I think it's really important that Naperville prepares for extended futures. I am a young 35-year-old and I'm an entrepreneur as well. So in our businesses, we talk today about what we want to prepare for 10 and 15 years down the road. I think it's important that Naperville prepare very strategically for our youth. I spoke a second ago about adaptability. I think it's important to understand that our markets will change, the way we live changes, the demands that we have. When we think about the millennials, if we would call them that, Dr. White spoke a second ago, they travel differently, they communicate differently, they want a different environment than maybe we're used to. We have to be ready for that and I want to be part of those discussions and part of that planning. I think some, the question here is what initiatives would I like to see and support? I definitely am a strong proponent of technology. I think it's important that we're preparing the community to accept this generation or our youth. I think it's important that we're creating jobs for them. We have to understand that the way people work even just 10 years ago is a little different. In addition to owning small businesses in Naperville, I also own commercial properties. And our commercial properties, we design these properties, quite honestly, around live, work, play models. And that is the model of incubator spaces, being able to commute via train. And really, the way we do things now is very different. And I think that the city needs to, can be a catalyst in this and can make some significant changes now to prepare for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crumman?
Thank you. I agree with what Kevin said, I agree with what Mike said, I agree with what Mike said, Kevin and the others. What it comes down to is jobs, 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 and housing, housing, housing. As an economics professor, I can tell you that the future of jobs and the future of the economy is technically based. And I'm the only one of the candidates that has a background in technology. So we looked at Chevron came up, I'm sorry, Chervon is now coming to the Naperville area and we're trying to get Caterpillar. These are both engineering, R&amp;D, manufacturing companies, and I have a background in that. So these are the jobs that will bring our kids back. When it comes to housing, we have a very diverse community. We have single, we have empty nesters, we have seniors looking for assisted housing, we have seniors just looking to downsize, we have young families starting out, we have families with teenage children. And all that diversity, and we just talked about diversity earlier, cause, leads us to have diversity in housing as well. I currently live in a four-bedroom house by myself because my boys are raised and now I'm looking to downsize. But the problem and the difficulty I have is where do I downsize to that's more economic? I don't want to downsize in up-budget, I want to downsize in down-budget. So I think we have to look at a diversity, a portfolio approach to our housing and not just have single-family housing. Thank you.
Thank you. As we talked about economy, now let's go to the outreach and diversity. As the name says, Indian Community Outreach, we are the one who are hosting. Naperville, over the past 20 years, has become more and more diverse. Current diversity is at 25% with Indian Americans number around 10% of the population. Most of this population is highly educated, as we all know, and very successful in their businesses. The young students of the Indian descent families living in the city and the Naperville are very driven to be successful. As a result, Indian Community Outreach, ICO, was announced by Naperville in 2013. And since then, ICO has contributed to educate, integrate, and empower all citizens via education. Cultural exchange and promoting economic interest of Naperville. Is cultural diversity important to you? And if elected to the city council, what would you do to do further engage such a diverse population for the betterment of the city? We start with Ms. Broadhead.
No. Mr. Coyne?
Mr. Coyne, please.
Sure, thank you. Yes, I think diversity is critically important. I believe what's made America great and successful as a nation has been the tremendous number of cultures that have come here and offered their collective talents, experiences here to build a great country. And I believe that same thing has happened and happening in Naperville. We need to fully embrace diversity and culture. It's becoming an increasingly small world. We, again, getting back to the theory that we need to have a bright future for our children, for our children to succeed in this increasingly small world, they need to be able to work with different groups and different types of people. So I think by embracing diversity, not only do you build a stronger community with differing talents and cultures and experience, you position your children to do very well in what is this very small world that we're living in now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then it goes to Mr. John Crumman.
Thank you. I live on Hadassa. I think it's the best street in all of Naperville, but I'm a little biased. On my street, we have a gay couple and we have a mixed-race couple, we have a single parent, we have multiple Indian, people from the Indian community. And I just think it's a wonderful, a wonderful thing. And so the question, and I've often said, any discrimination is too much discrimination. I've said that numerous times from this diocese. And I just think that what we're doing as a council is we are embracing diversity. We talked about diversity of housing to, that's not only just for the different lifestyles or stages of life that our community is in. But there's difference in ethnicity, there's difference in all of that. And to Kevin's point, I think we are stronger together. And the more we embrace that, the better off we are. Thank you.
Thank you much. Michael Isaac?
Thank you. How fitting is this question, right as we are at the foothills of the Holy Festival, the Spring Festival of Love? You know, when we decided to live in Naperville, there were several factors. One of the items that attracted us to Naperville, not only is it a great community, great education, really is diversity. There are a multitude of different races, ethnic backgrounds, orientations that live in Naperville. I have twin three-year-old boys and it's very important to me that they get exposed to more than just that's inside of my household and what's in our neighbor to the left and neighbor to the right. I think the city of Naperville, quite frankly, has been a catalyst in being able to offer a multitude of different cultural festivals, diverse programs. I am a huge proponent of this. I'd like to see this continue. I'm excited about the festival coming up soon. I'm also happy that CECA is a part of this. I think it's important that we continue to support things such as this to help show our youth and, quite frankly, attract others to the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to Mr. White.
First of all, yes, I think it is extremely important. And I can talk from personal experience. My time in the military has allowed me to travel in different countries, especially in Europe and even over in Southwest Asia. And I've been exposed to different cultures, met hundreds of people, and I understand the importance of getting to know people that don't necessarily look like me. My children are what you call army brats. That means they're, we're moving all the time, two to three years. Now, that can be a very tumultuous time for a young person, but it also is an opportunity. And my children looked at it as an opportunity that we've, they've had an opportunity to meet so many different people. They're very outgoing. Their inner circle, if you look at their inner circle, it has people from all different types of races and backgrounds, as long as, as well as my wife and myself. They've totally excelled. My son is graduated, both graduated from Nook Valley High School. My son is a graduate of Yale University. My daughter is currently a junior at Howard University. And I'm telling you that, not necessarily to brag on them, yeah, I am a little bit, but I want you to understand that they've been able to thrive in that type of environment. So as far as I'm concerned, as long as we focus on what makes us, keeps us the same and makes, and what's common that we both share, we can, we can take advantage of all those different perspectives that make us different. So those are the things I think that diversity brings to the table. What I would like to do, though, as part of National Night Out, is to establish a get-to-know-your-neighbor type of program. Since I've lived here, I'm in a transit, we've been a transit-type of community, we understand that we don't get to see everyone, we don't meet everyone. I like to get out there and meet your neighbor so that you get to know them on a personal basis. You're going to find you have more in common with them than what's different. And once we do that, I think we'll, this is what the media says and we'll get a better understanding of what we're all about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now to Ms. Julie Broadhead.
There certainly was a time when suburbs were not necessarily welcoming to people of various ethnic groups, but that has changed tremendously, especially, I think, within, say, the last 30 or 40 years. And certainly, cultural diversity is absolutely an integral part of a 21st-century Naperville. In my work at North Central College, I research and sometimes teach about suburbs. And something that is quite fascinating, we look at a lot of demographic data, is that with diversity, in places like Naperville, big suburbs within the orbit of a major city, the increase in diversity is correlated with increased education levels, increased income levels. So it is mathematically provable that it has been a good thing for a place like Naperville to embrace its diversity. So for instance, the last census was 2010 in that 65.5% of our residents have a BA degree or higher. That figure is only 32% for the country as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin?
Thank you. Earlier, Chief Marshall held up a cellphone and said that it's really a computer, but it's also something that links the world together. Diversity is happening before our very eyes. It's been happening in this country, as Councilman Coyne said, for many years. My grandfather is an immigrant from Ireland. Our CECA program is geared toward making sure that Naperville celebrates diversity. So for those of us that can't go out and travel the world, our CECA program allows the world to come here and teach us. And we see that almost every week in Naperville, whether it's some type of an event. Last week, we had the St. Patrick's Day Parade. In August, we'll have the Indian Independence Day Parade. I like to think that we both celebrate overthrowing the British and that's maybe not a bad thing. But as part of the CECA program, we also see people coming to bring businesses to Naperville that reflect diversity, whether that be in the type of restaurants that we have here. We see different types of grocery stores that cater to the various ethnic groups that live here in Naperville. And I think the more that our young people are exposed to these types of things, the more they understand. You know, a short story, my son studied civil rights in high school. And he said, Dad, that was so stupid. And I said, you know what? It was. And I was very young at the time, but my parents thought it was a huge deal. So the more we expose our kids to diversity, the smaller the world becomes and the better the world will become for the future.
Thank you much. And now to Ms. Julie.
Cultural diversity is very important to me and to my family. My mother and her family came to this country after they survived World War II, and she was 13 years old at that time. She arrived with only the clothes on her back. She did not speak the language, none of them did. She came to this country, settled in Chicago, and they had a very tumultuous time here. They had to survive a lot of violence in the neighborhoods. They weren't welcomed. My grandmother had to teach her English in the evening after she got home from working at Cook County Hospital as a nurse's aide. She had to teach her children English before they could attend school. These are valuable lessons that my family has shared with us and my children and are all generations in our family. It's important to us, it's part of the fabric of our lives. When we moved to Naperville, we were very, very delighted to be in a community that's so welcome and loving and supportive of all people. One of my fondest memories is of my boys sitting at our kitchen table with their friends, and their friends are from all walks of life. And there's no difference in their eyes. So I'm very passionate about it, very supportive. I love the things Naperville does, like our sister city's commission and your organization here, so thank you very much for that. I am very, very happy to be in a city called Naperville that does so much for all its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to Mr. Michaels.
As an immigrant, my mom, Ilsa, drove me to excel in education. I feel all immigrants want their children to succeed. Naperville is that melting pot where all immigrants can succeed and be successful to their wildest dreams. As a business owner, you know, I would really like to see many, many more family-owned businesses come into Naperville. Unfortunately, the rents are so high and the taxes are so high. In fact, our sales tax for the city of Naperville went up to 8%. And when I cash out people at my facility, at my oil change shop, they're like, what's this, what's this 8% all about? And I tell them, well, you know, we have more costs here in Naperville. And I try to justify that to them and it's, sometimes they're incredulous. So things go up and I'd really like to, when I get onto the city council, try to embolden more people to take that leap of faith and become business owners in some of these vacant properties that we have along Ogden Avenue. You know, the Ogden Avenue corridor is nothing but closed-up stores and a blighted area. We really need to start focusing on the We really need to start focusing on the Ogden Avenue corridor and give many people the opportunity to open businesses and provide for their families. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we are moving on to questions that we've gotten from the audience. The time limit on these is about a minute. The first question that we have here is, there are many taxing bodies that provide, well, that lay an extra burden on our residents. What are your views on government consolidation? The first question goes to Ms. Berkowitz.
I agree that we need to go in and we need to examine our budgets, because we need to stop raising taxes and utilities and services, because our residents are having a very difficult time affording all of these increases. A corporation has to go in to continue to remain profitable and thoroughly review its procedures, and it's something that the city of Naperville needs to do as well. We need to continue to support our families and our community. That's what Naperville is all about. There are things that perhaps we're allocating money to that would be best spent in other areas. So let's sit down at the table, and let's see what we're spending our money on, and let's find a way to make this work, because we're accountable to the residents, and we need to make sure that they are able to afford to live in Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strick.
Indeed, there are many taxing bodies here in Naperville. We have the Library District, Park District, Police and Fire, Pension. So all these little districts are nickeling-diming the residents of Naperville. We should see some, we should really try to fight for more consolidation, because each one of those departments or one of those taxing bodies has a director. And each director has people that are employed in them. And I'm all about consolidating government and really trying to provide these services through one taxing body. My views, as far as trying to encompass how we can reduce all these bodies, is that if we went to a zero-based budget, when I was a salesman, they would come to me and say, "Mike, your budget is $100,000 this year. What are you going to need next year?" And I'm going to say, "105." And before the end of the year, I'm going to spend that money, because if I don't spend that money the next year, guess what? I'm not going to get it. So, we always see these incremental raises, and I think the city should really think about starting out at a zero-based budget and going from there. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Broadhead.
And could you repeat the question? It's about consolidation, is that right?
That is correct. Consolidation of taxing bodies.
Of taxing bodies, okay.
Yep.
Well, I certainly supported the consolidation of road districts, which is something Naperville had offered to, the city of Naperville had offered to Naperville Township. That didn't work out, but I think probably the proposal that is on there to combine road districts is a good one. I think we'll see the end of townships in a generation or two. It will take a while, it's very hard to undo an existing body. But we look for lots of kinds of consolidation and cooperation when it comes to providing various kinds of services. We combine with Lyle in the use of an ambulance, and we have a, our police department actually answers most of the 911 calls that goes to unincorporated areas. That could probably be taken over by the city of Naperville eventually, if that would work out. And we certainly cooperate as well with the city of Aurora, and have just worked on something within our last couple of city council meetings in order to combine some aspects of the 911 service.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. The reason we have so many taxing bodies is really a legacy of when Naperville and DuPage County was largely rural. As the town has grown, the governmental levels have not changed. So we have DuPage County and Will Counties that are required to provide sheriff services to unincorporate areas that really don't need them anymore. There's no way that they can respond as quickly as Naperville Police can to any emergency that occurs, and we really need to move that off of the tax rolls here in Naperville. One thing I'd like to see is we have the township building sitting on one of the prime pieces of real estate in the entire city of Naperville. We have lots of vacant space here in this building. I'd love to see them move into our building here, get that property on the tax rolls. We could get property tax, we can get sales tax. It's good for the schools, it's good for the parks, it's good for the city, it's good for the township. So that would be one area of consolidation I think we can do very, very quickly, and I would hope that that would happen in the very near future.
Thank you. Mr. Crumman.
Thank you. I agree with Judy and Kevin again. I was in favor of the road district consolidation between the city and Naperville Township, with a couple of caveats. One, no one, community should force, or taxing body should force itself on the other. It has to be agreed, overwhelmingly agreed, by both communities. And this is a process that must be followed, you can't speed it up. So if we're going to consolidate, let's make sure we dot every i and we cross every t. Until that takes place, and that will take time, we can also reduce taxes by joining purchasing power. I've spoken about this many, many times. You know, we already do this with 911, as Judy mentioned, with the city of Aurora. We're sharing some purchasing power there. We are sharing traffic light maintenance with the county of DuPage. And just in the police and the fire, if there's overwhelming, we have mutual aid. So sharing resources, we can do that now and then work on consolidation through the process.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac.
Thank you. I'm definitely a strong proponent of responsible consolidation. Like I said a second ago, I'm an entrepreneur, we're a small business owner, and in the private sector, quite honestly, we do this almost every day. We look for ways in which our businesses can run more effectively, more responsibly, without compromising service. Just recently, I served as chairman of the Naperville-Aurora Residence for Lower Taxes. As some of the other folks just spoke about a second ago, it was in regards to educating on the consolidation of the Naperville Township Road District with the City of Naperville Road District. That's just one example. And as you probably recalled during the most recent election, it was a non-binding referendum which got a 90% yes vote. That tells us that the community wants us as well. That's just one item. Kevin spoke about another item a second ago, about the building. There are so many other ways that we can look at this. Using my business acumen that I use every day, quite frankly, my businesses, I'm excited about taking that over to the public sector and having these types of discussions that I have in our business every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Yes, thank you for the question. I'll tell you this, we have more, we have more levels of government than any state in the country. It's an overkill right now. So, there's something we definitely need to look at. I will tell you, just from a school perspective, there's, I want to say about 870 school districts in the state of Illinois alone. You look, there's about 45 or so in DuPage County. That's half of what is in the entire state of Louisiana. So there's some ways that we can cut back. There's schools with superintendents and principals, and there's only one school. I'm trying to figure that out. We need to look, so when it comes to government, let's look for win-win situations in which both bodies of government have an opportunity to benefit. And I would kind of agree with what Councilman Crumman said up here as well, and make sure that we understand that both sides have an opportunity to win. And we need to communicate that message out to the city, so they all understand exactly what's taking place. One area that I've seen that we've done very well is with the dispatching services between the city of Naperville and Aurora. That's worked out very well, and that's, those are just a few examples, or a great example, I think, of what we can do that would allow us to save some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne.
Thank you. I'm going to steal a quote from our DuPage County Chairman, Dan Cronin, who I've heard often say, "Consolidation is the issue of our time," and it is. Illinois has the most layers of government in the country by a lot, and it also has the highest level of real estate taxes clearly within our region, and that is not a coincidence. I believe there is duplicative spending at all levels because of all these units of government. I believe there's patronage. I believe there's an undue amount of politics in our policymaking because of all these layers of government. We've been a very active player in fighting, fighting some of this duplication locally through our road district initiatives. I put forth a ballot initiative that allowed our residents to speak on this issue, and as Mike Isaac indicated, it had overwhelming support. Nearly 90% of our residents made clear, we need to get consolidation done, we need to put cutting taxes as a priority, and put patronage and duplication to the side. We need to prioritize this going forward. I'll continue to. The residents, our residents, will have an opportunity in April to vote on the initiative that was presented back in November, and speak to this issue, which is very critical to the reduction of costs. Thanks.
Thank you. We've gotten a lot of questions from the audience. We are consolidating those questions as well, because there's a common theme to a lot of those. So if your question specifically doesn't get called out, it's probably because it's getting consolidated. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Next one, which is coming, is going to be a little emotional, more personal, in how we talk about to make it a more beautiful community. There is an increased issue with drugs in our communities, especially with the high school kids. What are the ways and means for the city to control this from becoming a larger neighborhood? And we start with Michael Isaac.
Sure. This is an emotional issue, and it's one in which we have to take our time and strategically solve. We've taken several steps as a city to get in front of this, and there have been several educational seminars, as well as our police department now carries on Narcan. I think it's important that we also, as a city, work with our not-for-profits. A lot of these types of issues start, quite frankly, in the home, and it's educating around the family, as well as the individual that may be using drugs. I think it's important that we, as a city, promote education around this topic. We not only promote education around the topic of the individual that may be using, but also the family members that are there to help, and understand that there is a safe way to do this. There are several programs that have just been instituted in regards to those folks that are using. They can go to the police department, and they can safely get the help that they need.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you for the question. I totally agree with you. It's an emotional issue, it's an issue that involves our young people especially, but it's even into our adult community as well. We've seen an increase, a couple of years ago, of about a 50% increase in deaths in DuPage County alone on heroin and opiate-related deaths. The following year, it went up to 78%. Now, it's not that, I'm not going to sit here and say it's not being addressed because we are addressing it, but we need to do more. We've got to figure out something here. I would propose that we establish a task force that is totally dedicated to solving this issue. I want to mitigate this and keep that number down to zero. That task force would involve folks like our police department, our fire department, our mental health institutions, our nonprofit organizations that focus primarily on drug prevention, groups like 360 Youth Services is an excellent example of this. So if we do that, I think that was one of the things that we can definitely do to help bring down those numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin.
Two of us.
Oh, okay. Mr. Kevin Coyne, sorry.
Oh, thank you. I'm an attorney, and in the course of my practice, I have had a couple of cases in which clients have called me with concerns and questions as to what they could do with employees or family members that they have come across that have had heroin or drug addiction issues. And one thing that's become obvious to me is I think there's a little bit of an awareness issue. When I grew up, heroin was an unheard-of item. Nobody around in my school did it. It was not very prevalent, to say the least, in my community. I think there may be a lack of awareness as to the gravity of this issue within the public, and I think we need to address that first as a city. The other issue that I think's been clear to me is that our many not-for-profit organizations that are in town that help people with these issues are also not as well-known as maybe they should be. We need to make sure they are fully promoted. And the best way to keep people away from heroin is to never have it in the community in the first place. So to that end, make sure they're not exposed to it, make sure our police have the resources they need to combat this very dangerous issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Mr. John Crumman.
Thank you. A couple of weeks back, I attended an author's presentation, and he wrote the book, A Beautiful Boy. And it was about, it's a very famous book, a number-one bestseller. And it's about his own struggle with his own son, who's now 35 and luckily still alive. And he didn't know where to turn. He didn't know what to do. And I saw that in the audience, there were parents there that were just at a loss, and I don't know what I would do. But I do think that, as a parent, but as a community, I think the de-escalation by the police is first. More of an understanding and trying to get treatment than lock them up and throw them away, I think is the best way to go. It's also, I support, and many up here as well, support many of the charities that work on these issues. It's through outreach, it's through education, and also just through care and understanding. Thank you.
Next is to Ms. Julie Berkovich.
Thank you. We don't live in a bubble. There is no way to eradicate the drugs in our communities. It's here. We can't close, build a wall, and put borders up. What we need to do is we need to teach our children good choices, and we need to teach them how to reach out when they need help if they make a mistake. It's not about that. There are people that want to help them. And we also have to educate, not only our kids, but we have to educate the parents, and we have to educate our educators, because this is in school. My boys would come home and tell me what was going on in school. So we have to give them the power to be able to, when they see a problem, to act on it and to provide the resources we need without punishment to help these kids. And this also applies to any, any generation in our community. We also have to tell our children that there are people out there that are preying on them and how to be smart and how to recognize this. So these are some of the skills that we should embrace and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Strick, next to you.
Michael Strick. Yeah? Thanks, Mike.
No, I said Michael Strick. Yes. Can you hear me now? Mr. Michael Strick.
Thank you. I believe increased education is the key to tackling the heroin problem or drug issues in our community. We have to understand that the youth in Naperville are bombarded with peer pressure and the need to fit in. The destruction or death caused by heroin and drugs should be the message echoed to our youth in school. Let them see the net, if they were to see the net result of dependency, their opinions will change. You know, I really believe that also, if anybody was to look in their medicine cabinet and have somebody that's in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, that they'll find that there is some opioids in there, whether it's Vicodin or any other opioid. And I think the parents really need to understand that those are the drugs that find their ways into the schools and into people's pockets. So if we had more education, that we disposed of all the unused medications in the homes with young adults, I think many of these addiction problems might subside. Thank you.
Thank you much. Ms. Julie Broadhead.
Thank you. Well, I'm here to give you some good news. The truth is, and we have data to show it, is that rates of alcohol, prescription drug, heroin, and tobacco use is actually falling among middle school and our high school population. We have data, I encourage you to look up the Power of Choice. You can compare the data about 203 and 204 students to that in the rest of DuPage County and in the state of Illinois. It's actually very good data. So it's 97% of our high school students are not using drugs, and that, you know, that's very good. We have had an increase in some heroin deaths, it's often in an older population, who are in their twenties and thirties. It's often in an older population who are in their twenties and thirties and possibly even older. So I think we're doing a good job with our students. I think the high schools right now, the police department and our social service agencies are extremely aware of it. There are lots of great programs they have to combat all those types of substance abuse. And I think we need to look to more that would help out our population that's a little bit older than that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kevin Galher.
Thank you. This is a multi-layered problem and it starts at the federal level. Most people don't realize that Vicodin, OxyContin, Fentanyl, the drugs that are mainly prescribed as painkillers in the United States, is legalized heroin. So people are given these drugs by their doctors to treat pain and they're highly addictive and so they become addicted. Councilwoman Broadhead is right. It's not primarily teenagers who are suffering from this problem. It's young adults and older. In the state of Illinois, we spent so much time talking whether about marijuana ought to be legalized for medicinal purposes. And I think in the history of the country, there are zero deaths attributed to marijuana overdose. And yet, we prescribe these heroin opioid derivatives on a daily basis for every ache and pain that happens. So I'd like to see the state of Illinois ban the use of opioid products even for medicinal purposes and I think that that would be a good first start. And we need to take action at the federal level as well.
Thank you. Now, jumping from drugs to economy and jobs. Joys of getting questions from all ends of the spectrum here. The question that's on the table here is, if you're currently on the council, what have you done to reduce taxes? If you're a candidate who hasn't yet served on a council, what will you do to cut taxes? At the same time, create more jobs? Sorry. The first question is for Mrs. Strick.
Thank you. As a small business owner, I have seen the cyclic ups and downs in the Naperville economy. Back in 2008, during the recession, I was scrambling to figure out how I was going to pay my mortgage, pay my property taxes, which continued to go up even though the economy was faltering. I am a Naperville business owner. I see it every day, what's going on. There's more competition, more competition from not only the online folks, you know, closing these big-box stores, but I see competition in all facets of business owners here in Naperville. You know, I'm really concerned about the eight percent that most citizens are paying in Naperville. And some on the council might say, well, Chicago's paying ten percent. You know, I see these increased costs driving businesses away from Naperville into Bolingbrook or into Aurora. We really need to get a cost, control of our costs and I am a fiscal watchdog. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne.
Thank you. As a business attorney, I work with the issue of taxes every day. So I see very clearly and up close the impact that real estate taxes have, not just on residents but also businesses. They hurt everybody. Our high real estate taxes, our impact affordability of homes, which we've covered, hurt property value. They make people leave our community because they cannot pay them. I've done a great deal in my short time on council to combat real estate taxes. I've proposed two million dollars in real estate tax abatements. Our tax levy's gone down. I've promoted in a very aggressive fashion government collaboration and consolidation. That, too, will lead to further reduction in costs. I promote and stress the importance of reducing real estate taxes as a central part of my campaign. It's been a central part of my time on council and it will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crewman.
Thank you. Providing superior services and holding taxes down is one of the most difficult jobs we, as a council, do. It's a difficult assignment. Expenses keep going up and up. But for myself, along with Kevin and Judy and Kevin, we have reduced your real estate levy. And myself, I've individually voted against increased capital spending both in 2015 and 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac.
Thank you. You know, this is actually an exciting question because there's a lot of opportunity around this. So as I see this as one of the biggest opportunities in Naperville is responsible economic development. When you look at Ogden Avenue, you also look at our business districts. Fifth Avenue Station is just about to be redeveloped and it's south Naperville, Route 59 and Ninety-Fifth Street. As we're looking at this, we have to be smart about what we're putting into these areas. We need to make sure that it creates jobs. In addition, we also need to make sure that it is bringing in retailers that is going to help bring in the tax revenue that you were just speaking about. And in turn, what that'll do is help lower the tax payment that our residents are having to pay. In addition, another item that I spoke about a few moments ago is consolidation. That's definitely, I would say, this one and two single hot topics in Naperville right now of how to consolidate and how to have responsible economic development.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Yes, as far as a tax reduction, several of the folks up here have already said it, but we've got to figure out how do we bring in businesses here into Naperville? Just as Mike just said, you've got to figure out a way, how can I, how can we bring in businesses to help take that tax burden and shift it somewhat to the business community and away from our residents? One thing that I think we can look at from a business standpoint is look at working with our Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce, work with our Naperville Development Partnership as far as figuring out opportunities and teaming up with some other agencies that can bring in some businesses and identify them and bring them here to Naperville. I think it's important that we go out and we train and provide workshops for our new business owners so that they can survive past that one- or two-year timeframe where a lot of businesses will tend to fold at that particular point. And I would tell you, I think when you look at bringing in maybe more manufacturing jobs versus the retail piece, because from the retail market, the internet's really just taken over. It's really put a big cut into our ability for retail stores to stay afloat. So, and not to mention that, we don't get the sales tax revenue from that because they buy it online. So those are a few of the things I think we need to look at. Being more fiscal responsible as well would help out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Broadhead.
Thank you. First, I wanted to say, I don't think you're going to save any money going to Bolingbrook. Their home rule sales tax is three times the home rule sales tax that Naperville has and their water bills are considerably, considerably higher. So I'm an incumbent and what we have done is adopt financial principles that will keep the city on a really great footing, have a balanced budget, pay down our debt, increase our reserves, pay down our pensions. All of those things don't necessarily reduce taxes, per se, but they do lots of things to keep us in a very stable and successful community. If you look at your tax bill, say if your tax bill is $10,000, your real estate taxes, only about 800 of that goes to, or, sorry, a little bit more than that, say 1,100 of that would go to the city of Naperville. So the reductions that we make are really chipping away at about 11% to 13% of your tax bill. It's very difficult to take away large portions, but we work on all kinds of things that we can possibly do in order to make it more reasonable and provide great services.
Thank you. Mr. Galher.
Thanks. You know, the Great Recession wreaked havoc on the city of Naperville's finances. It wasn't until 2015, when the councilmembers here took office, that we were able to implement measures that put Naperville on sound financial footing. And it would have been irresponsible for us not to do that. The way we reduce taxes is by expanding our real estate tax base. And the easiest way to do that is by getting some of our underutilized commercial properties in town back up and running again. But that's really market-driven. There's very little that we, as a city, can do to have that occur. And you look across the country, the entire retail and commercial market is still trying to figure out how the impact of internet sales is affecting what's happening in the commercial areas. One thing I think we need to do is change our zoning ordinance with respect to commercial developments. It's a straitjacket on innovative thinking. I think we need to broaden what can be done so that, once the market does figure out what they want to see in terms of commercial development in the future, Naperville's ready to go. So I really think we need to change our ordinances to anticipate what's coming in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. Ms. Barkovich.
The continual rise of taxes, utilities, and fees in Naperville are choking the individual and the small business owner. I work in the downtown area. There are virtually no small mom-and-pop businesses there. There are a couple that are hanging on, but probably won't be there much longer. We spend a lot of money on our downtown area and it has become a destination spot for people from all over, all over the state. However, we have a south and a north side and we also have an Ogden Corridor that we need to give some tender, loving care. And we need to bring in some businesses that will energize our families, provide them with a place to experience a good dinner or a good shopping experience. We have mom-and-pop restaurants that are struggling to survive because of the increase in the utilities, the electric and the water. So we need to tackle these problems, go in and make some changes and provide relief for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. If the audience has any more questions, please feel free to raise your hands. I'm just repeating that announcement and we'll continue on.
As we talk about diversity, and the next question comes to you from this perspective, and this is an audience question, and we merged two questions, actually. Some of us in the minorities feel our sense of freedom is challenged by few fringe elements. As a city council member, what would you do to ensure the Naperville continues to be an immigrant-welcoming, equal-opportunity, vibrant city that attracted many of us here in the first place? And the second question attached to that is also, what are your views about Naperville being a sanctuary city? And we start with Mr. White.
First of all, I would, I've been to a few, I've been to several of our council meetings and I know the council's looking at having Naperville a welcoming city. And I'm all for letting individuals understand that, hey, we do welcome everyone here and without necessarily using the word sanctuary city because there's political and legal implications by going that route. So if we were here earlier, you had a chance to listen to Chief Marshall and he talked to you about, we haven't had any major incidents here in the city of Naperville as far as immigrants creating crime or doing anything like that and we're not going to use any Naperville resources to go out and influence that. So I'm for welcoming cities, for sure. Let folks know that they're welcome. We'd love to have everyone here and have everyone be a contributing member of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Isaac.
I think that Naperville, quite honestly, is a welcoming city. Right now, I feel very comfortable. I would consider myself minority. My husband and I have two beautiful three-year-old kids. Our family dynamic is a little different than you would say the classification of norm. So I feel comfortable living in Naperville. I consider Naperville a very welcoming community. However, I think it's important that we ensure that message is out to all residents. It's very important that all residents feel safe here, that immigrants feel safe coming to Naperville, and that we create Naperville as a community that can attract everyone and everyone can have that same feeling that we have as well. So in regards to a welcoming city, I'd like to see the language on the proposed resolution that I understand is currently being drafted. But you know what? I think that Naperville has done a really good job of adding diversity and enabling some of this welcoming city concept.
Thank you much. Mr. John Crewman.
Thank you. I had a conversation with someone just this morning about this. So to Mike's point, I think Naperville is a welcoming community. We spoke about diversity earlier and diversity is one of our greatest strengths. I do understand, I've visited many other communities, the Islamic Center, I've visited other religious, oh, I lost four words here. Sorry. But I've visited other religious communities and there is a feel out there that there is something in the vapor that is not welcoming. We, as city councils, we, as city leaders, it's our job to make sure that everyone feels safe and that everyone feels comfortable. And even though we are a welcoming community, what does that mean? And some kind of, and I'm not sure the verbiage, I have not seen an ordinance yet or a statement, but something along those lines, I think, would do a great favor and a great justice to the people who are feeling singled out. Thank you.
Thank you much. Mr. Kevin Coyne now.
Thank you. Our police do not enforce federal immigration law, nor do they inquire into citizenship when dealing with arrestees or witnesses in the public. So for that reason, I don't see any reason to undertake the many federal questions that would come with that sanctuary city designation. So I would not support our doing that. With respect to feeling safe and welcome, though, I do think, right now, in our political atmosphere, there is a level of extremism and partisanship, which is very unfortunate and negative, and I think right now, it's getting worse. I think what we can do as a council is lead by example and never allow such rhetoric to come from our dais to promote and celebrate groups such as ICO that are doing what they can to promote their group, your group, and just celebrate the concept of diversity and make sure that everybody knows that Naperville can be a safe place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you much. Ms. Judy Broadhead now.
Thank you. And could you, I don't think I caught the first part of that question.
Some of us in the minorities feel our sense of freedom is challenged by few fringe elements. As a city council member, what would you do to ensure that Naperville continues to be an immigrant-welcoming city?
Thank you. I hadn't heard the language of fringe elements. That's what I was looking for. I'm a professor at North Central College. We have a fairly diverse population and our students started feeling this this year. And what the college did was start a series of fireside chats where people could come and have frank discussions about what they feared, wherever they were, along the political spectrum. That turned out to be very useful and it's been a very productive exercise. I don't know if we need to have something similar in, on a larger scale, you know, that's something that the city would do or groups like your own could sponsor. That might not be a bad idea. I agree with Kevin that it's too difficult to become a sanctuary city and has all kinds of legal ramifications. Whether or not we do a resolution that says that we are a welcoming committee, I think we have to live it rather than just make a statement and make it obvious in actions like the one we saw today with the mayor and the chief of police that
Thank you.
we enforce, we, in fact, are welcoming.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kevin Galher.
Thank you. I think, first of all, I don't think that we're ever going to become a sanctuary city. It would really mean nothing to declare ourselves a sanctuary city. I will say that we live being an open community every day, whether we know it or not. In 1968, two percent of the population in the city of Naperville was minorities. Now, according to the most recent survey, about twenty-four percent of the community is minorities. So we're living it every day. Minorities are choosing to come and live in our community and I got to assume they feel welcome in coming here. We live it every day through our schools. We live it every day in our Park District programs where the kids interact in various activities and our seniors interact in different activities. We live it in our CECA program where we embrace the cultures that choose to come to Naperville and ask to conduct an event that is open to all the communities. The Indian community puts on a parade and they have a fantastic festival that I think has exposed people in Naperville to your culture and broken down barriers that may have existed and helped bring us closer together.
Thank you. Ms. Julie Barkovich.
Naperville embraces and celebrates cultural diversity and our minorities all year round. We offer our residents an amazing opportunity to learn and grow and it begins in our schools. We do it in our We do it in our churches. We do it in our other organizations, our athletic programs, scouting. We have boys from all over the world, and it's a wonderful learning experience. We all get a lot out of that. We can continue to embrace this, but we have to understand that people in Naperville give their heart and soul, and we feel that we are welcoming. I have had some people a little disturbed because they felt that people thought Naperville wasn't a good community. So I think we have to be careful because we can give the wrong impression. And I am very proud, as a 22-year-old resident, to say that I feel that Naperville has continued to show this and we will continue to make all people welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Michael Strick now.
Thank you. Growing up in the city of Chicago, I went to a multicultural school. It was, at that time, 50% white, 50% black. So I can understand diversity. I have many friends, many, many friends throughout the years that I still chat with on Facebook. Naperville is a very welcoming and open city. I don't believe there's any discrimination going on whatsoever in the city. You know, although I have not walked in many people's shoes, I can understand if somebody gets a look, like, you know, "What are you doing here?" or something like that. So, you know, I'm very attuned to that. And, you know, I really believe that any discrimination based on race, color, creed, religion is unwarranted in the city of Naperville. And I would also like to echo what the mayor had said and also the chief of police, that it should not be tolerated in the city of Naperville at all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next question is going to be a little odd. We have talked a bit about what US council members, if elected, can bring to the table or do for us. We're going to turn the tables around and say, if elected, what do you expect from minority communities like ours to do to support and make the city better? We're going to start off with Ms. Crewman.
You're right, that's a little different. I have been on city council for the last two years, and I think this council has done a good job, and I think you all have done a good job. Your Indian Day celebration is one of the bigger ones in the community. I think by having events like this, I think by having the parade, working with council, council working with you, being a presence, I think things can only get better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Yes, great question. Yeah, it's different, like how you asked that. But one thing I would definitely look at, as I said before, earlier in my comments, get out and meet other people. Meet folks that just don't look like you, okay? Because we are a melting pot here in Naperville. And again, let's embrace that commonality that we all share that will allow us to really take advantage of our differences once we recognize how much that we share in common. The other thing I would ask for the community is to ensure that you communicate with the council and let us know what your concerns are. I listen. I love listening to people. Doesn't mean we're going to always agree, but I'm very empathetic to hearing other points of view and understanding what they're asking from us. Each time I do that, I seem to learn something new each time, as well as a person that I'm talking to as well. We all tend to walk away with a greater understanding of a particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barkovich.
Open and honest communication is essential between city council and its residents. As a vice president on our homeowners association, I often have to sit at the table with our homeowners and bring multiple homeowners together and mediate and come to a solution that's fair and honest with everyone. Well, city council needs that type of feedback and participation from the community as well. I would encourage that. I would always be available, and it would be one of my top priorities in order to represent you completely, honestly, and with integrity. That would be one of my main principles. I would ask you to continue to encourage your youth to get involved and to learn what the role of local government is that will help them to develop to be future leaders, perhaps maybe the next president. And it would also add to our, the strength that we have to serve your community. So open, honest, and frank communication and frequent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strick.
Thank you. As you asked that question, I thought about a great American, and his name was John Wayne. And before he died, he came out with a saying that the hyphen after "American" or before is something that is really a divisional type thing. When we start hyphenating our American-ness, it kind of, you know, I mean, everybody, I could say I'm a German-American, and you know what? But I'm an American first. And the Indian community can say, "I'm an Indian-American," but they should be an American first. So that's the kind of thing that we should be instilling in people, that, yeah, you know, I go to some Oktoberfest with my parents, but I'm also an American. And the Indians have all their culture, and it's great. But we should all be, I'm getting goosebumps, get rid of the hyphen and just become Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac.
Sure. Like I said a few moments ago, I'm a local business owner, and one of the ways that we are successful in the local business world is listening to the individuals that work with us. I have over 50 employees that work in our organization. So one of the things I would ask for out of this group is to educate me. I'm not going to know all the answers. I am a sponge. I want to understand what the issues are. I also want to hear solutions. So as a up-and-coming potential city councilman, I may not know all the answers, and I'm going to look for you to help educate me. I'm also going to look for you guys to volunteer and work side by side as we're dealing with some of these big issues that, quite frankly, affect everybody in Naperville. So I really think that you guys can be a catalyst in educating us and getting us to understand and, quite frankly, come up with solutions together.
Thank you. Ms. Geller.
Thank you. I used to caddy for a living, and one of the golfers I was caddying for asked me what his score was, and I had to think back to what my dad said. There's two kinds of words that come out of your mouth, true words and false words. So at the risk of my $5 tip, I said seven. And he said, "I have, I'm at five." And I said, "Well, it's your scorecard." But he had a seven. So you hear candidates say a lot of things during elections, and they're either true or they're false. Councilman Crewman asked at the very beginning, he said, "Have we earned your trust?" And we've either earned your trust by telling, being true in what we said or being false. So what I would ask you to do is hold our feet to the fire. Make sure that we are held accountable. Come back to us and say, "You said you were going to do this, you didn't do that." We either have a reasonable explanation or we don't. But I think you need to hold us accountable because this is your community, we're your representatives, and we're here to do your will.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne.
Thank you. Thank you. I think this forum is a great example of the kinds of things that minority groups can do to better our community. This has been a tremendous opportunity for the voters to hear what we're all about. And I think through events such as these, through your offering your talent, your experience, and your culture, you're strengthening the fabric of our community through and through. Through adding your unique perspective, you'll help us deal with the challenges that our city deals with. Again, as the world gets smaller and increasingly diverse locally, you're helping our children, the next generation, deal with other groups and other cultures. And that's going to be a very important tool for them as they deal with the world and the decades to come. So I again thank you for this opportunity today and look forward to working with your group, ICO, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Broadhead.
Thank you. When I moved to this community in 1985, we had some problems with a local developer and our subdivision. I think I called the city a few times to complain, but I had no idea I could have called my elected officials or written to my elected officials or gone down to City Hall and made a complaint. If I had known that then, I would have done that. So yes, please do let us know what you think and you are worried about. There are some people we hear from in the community on almost certainly a monthly basis, and their voices get heard because they do correspond with us. Secondly, I would keep active in cultural events that are offered to the larger community. I think it's a wonderful thing when people apply to SECA and sponsor various kinds of cultural events. The third thing is, please, and I know some of you already do this, so I guess I'm asking you to do more of what you already do, volunteer for our boards and commissions. There's a general application that we are happy to have, and you can choose a board or commission. Encourage your high school-age students, and probably some of you have already done that, to also be student members. They can be non-voting members of boards and sit at the ends here. They can't vote, but they certainly are part of the conversation and they are asked for their opinion.
Thank you. This is the last question. We're going to keep it short. It's going to be 30 seconds only because we've got it shut down by three, so we've got to leave little time for closing statements as well. Do you support a humane ordinance that requires pet stores to offer rescue animals but does not affect responsible breeders? Responsible, but does not affect responsible breeders? And it's going to be a 30-second question. The first one will go to Mrs. Strick.
I wholeheartedly support such an ordinance and would be one of the first things that I'd try to bring up if graciously elected to the city council.
Thank you. Ms. Broadhead.
I think it's a possibility. We've been through it once where our legal department and our police department were trying to figure out how that would be enforced, and I think that's the stumbling block we have right now.
Thank you. Mr. White.
I'm sorry. I would embrace what the states already established at our local level. That would give us some enforcement opportunity if the laws are being broken in that particular regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barkovich.
I do support that. I am the proud, well, my son is the proud owner of two adopted tortoises, and we had adopted frogs. We also had our dog Lucky that we adopted from the Humane Society. We had her for 16 and a half years. And we are very, very compassionate about the animals out there that are waiting for a home. So yes, I do support that.
Thank you. Ms. Geller.
Well, my kids are the owners of a bird, a turtle, and three rescue dogs, which means that I take care of them. I absolutely support this ordinance. The federal and state government have dropped the ball on enforcement. The Trump administration recently stopped all funding for the website that was providing information. The state government has no money to enforce this, so I think it's incumbent on the city of Naperville to take over the responsibility to enforce these laws.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne.
Thank you. I do think I could support such an ordinance as long as it was carefully drafted and did not preclude outright the sale of dogs commercially. I think there's been some trouble in defining the concept of puppy mill or pet store, but clearly I'm an animal lover. We adopted our dog from a shelter. We want animals to be treated well in Naperville, and I think I could be open to such an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crewman. Mr. Isaac.
Hey, thank you. So I currently work in the pet industry, so I have a breadth of knowledge in this category. As far as an ordinance is concerned, I would love to see language on this type of ordinance and a potential draft ordinance for the city of Naperville. Additionally, I'd love to be part of the discussion with my facts and background. I definitely feel like I can add a lot to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will get to our closing statements. We're going to start off with Mr. White.
Thank you very much.
Just one second.
Yes.
It's one minute for the closing statements.
Oh, man.
I was going to bump it up from 30 seconds to one minute, so it's in your favor.
All right. Thank you. I started off by telling you why I came to Naperville. Now, let me tell you about why I stayed. First of all, this is a place that my kids call home. I told you before that my kids are Army brats, meaning that we moved all the time. We moved here in 2005, and we've been here ever since. This is their home, and, you know, they can actually go tell their friends where they're from, and they can tell them it's Naperville. The great schools, that's another reason we decided to stay. I am very proud to be on the Board of Education, and along with, in 2003, I can proudly say that we are, Naperville, Illinois has the number two public school systems in the country. I'm very proud of that. Safe neighborhoods and safe communities, that's another reason why I stayed here. As a member of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, I get to see firsthand what happens in that particular department, get to hear, to talk to the chiefs all the time. And I'm proud, again, to say Naperville was voted the number one city or safest city in America to live. We have a very vibrant downtown. I stayed for those reasons. And finally, this is a very philanthropic city. People give, 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 and I'm very proud of that. And I would just like to say, vote for me, my website, BennyWhite.org, I'm number seven on the ballot. Thank you very much for the forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strick.
Thank you. People want to trust their politicians. I am a common sense, down-to-earth, hard-working, and approachable person. I view myself as someone with, who generally cares about the out-of-control government. Just because we have the apocalytes and the money in Naperville doesn't mean that we can continuously afford it. You know, Judy brought up the fact that our tax levy is going down, but they just increase our EAVs, equalized assessed values, so we're paying the same. I want to save the residents and serve the residents and community of Naperville. I want to bring this tax levy down, actually get some real reductions. Look at our pension liability, which is already at $157 million. Water Street is beautiful. I want to cut costs and consolidate government, and I want to be a business owner that can bring in more businesses to the city. Fiscal responsibility, promote youth and safety, and sustainability of our environment in Naperville is also a big concern. Please vote for me, Mike Strick, on April 4th. My website is strickfornaperville.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac.
Thank you. And also, thank you to the Indian community for hosting this forum today. This was very informative, and it was really enjoyable to be on this site as well. I appreciate what you guys bring to the community also. Like I told you earlier, I'm a business owner, I'm a commercial property owner, I'm also a father, but in addition, I'm a resident, and I'm just like most of you guys sitting out there in the audience. I live in Naperville just like you do, and I make decisions just as a resident. I asked for your vote on April 4th. I currently sit on the Financial Advisory Board, which I was appointed by Mayor Cherico two years ago with Nimish Bott, which I got to know Nimish quite well. We made some very tough decisions to help, quite frankly, do a lot of what was discussed up here over the last couple of years in regards to getting the city of Naperville to the financial position and getting us, quite frankly, forecasted over the next eight years. Lastly, as a potential city councilman, my goal is to help us with strategic planning to make sure that we're prepared for our youth as well as our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barkovich.
I would like the opportunity to serve Naperville in a larger capacity. I've enjoyed being on our homeowners association board and working with our neighborhood, and I will continue to do that. But this is a good time for me to step up and work for all of our residents and provide a voice for our residents. Whether we're on the south side or the north side or in the middle, we all need a voice, and I will promise and work every day to be that voice for our residents. I have the benefit of working with all generations here in Naperville. I have a strong connection I have a strong connection to all of these factions within our community, and I will continue to nurture those relationships and work for the benefit of making Naperville an even greater community. Thank you very much, and I hope you will consider casting your vote for me on April 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crumman.
Thank you. My name is John Crumman. If you see my signs, I'm the one with the red K. I start, will tell you that serving on city council for the last two years has simply been a joy of a lifetime. And why has it been a joy of a lifetime? We've been effective. We've been very effective. So, I only have a minute, so bear with me as I read quickly. Accomplishments: On a budget of $450 million, we've paid all $13 million in debt. We've balanced our budgets. We've eliminated health care for elected officials. We've come with multi, five-year, with multiple union agreements. We've maintained our AAA bond rating. We've developed and passed our financial principles. We streamlined SICA. We simplified our liquor codes. We've developed the city manager's gold. With Smart Grid, we've been able to reduce costs by over $3 million a year. I'm still going. Worked with the EPA to delay a $50 million wastewater upgrade due to phosphorus regulations. Sold unused city property. Passed e-cigarettes to be treated just like tobacco products. And we've hired a new IT director. My name is John Crumman. It's all about trust. I've said what I do and I do what I say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Geller.
Thanks very much, and I wanna thank the Indian outreach community for having us this afternoon. I first ran for council as a 29-year-old who knew nothing, but I was very, very blessed to be able to work with council members and business leaders that built this community. Many of them are not here anymore, but they built the jewel that Naperville is. They built the Riverwalk. They built our schools. They built our park districts, and I feel a responsibility to them to make sure that what they've produced for us continues into the future. I have seven-year-old twins. I raised a 26-year-old, so I'm still raising kids and I'm still concerned about the future, because every election is about the future. I've proven over the last 25 years that I care about Naperville. I know how to continue to make Naperville great, and I understand all of the issues that are facing Naperville. So, I'd ask you to vote for me, Kevin Gallagher, on April 4th.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne.
Thank you. I'm very proud of the work that I've done during my first two years in office. I believe I've taken actions that have helped make Naperville a stronger community. During the course of my first term, my motion for the elimination of councilman health insurance benefits, which was supported by my colleagues and has led to not only cost savings, but I think has made a statement to the community that we're doing what we can to reduce taxes and cut costs for our residents. I motioned for over $2 million worth of tax abatements during my time on council, and my colleagues again supported these motions, leading directly to two straight years of real estate tax reductions, 15% reduction overall during those two years. I've helped lead a discussion on the topic of government consolidation, putting forth ballot initiatives that let our residents have the opportunity to let their voices be heard on the topic of the consolidation, and they made clear they support consolidation and they want lower real estate taxes. If re-elected, if I have the honor of being re-elected, I can promise you that I'll never stop pushing to lower our real estate tax levy. I'll never stop fighting to reduce unnecessary government and duplicative spending, and I'll continue to take the actions needed to keep Naperville one of the safest communities in America. It's been a great honor to serve you. Again, my name is Kevin Coyne. I ask for your vote on April 4th, and thank you again to the ICO.
Thank you. Ms. Broadhead.
Thank you. My husband Gary and I raised our three children in Naperville, and we came with a third grader, a kindergartner, and a newborn. We moved in one day before school started, and probably some of you have had similar experiences. I started working just a few years after that at North Central College, and I've been a professor there for 27 years. I prepared for city council by spending many years on the plan commission and the zoning board of appeals. When you choose a city council candidate, you're voting for what the future of Naperville will be. I believe I have a track record that I can look back on proudly, and I respectfully ask for your vote. If you wanna find out more about me, you can look at Broadhead for Naperville.
Thank you so much. With this, I'll turn the tables over to Krishna to continue.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, can we have a round of applause for our candidates? They have done a magnificent job. So, thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for what you have been doing. It is difficult when someone steps in to run for a position. I know that, a lot of people, I mean, you know that. It is, it is something which, you give so much, from your family, from your business, from everywhere. So, thank you for what you do. We look forward for the best to win, and we look forward, the others, to stay, to continue with the community and work with us to make Naperville better. Can I also get a round of applause for our moderators, Viral and Vandana? Thank you for running a wonderful forum. Gotham for being a great timekeeper. Thank you, Gotham, for volunteering to do that. And everyone else who are here, who took time to come in and hear our candidates and be part of this forum. I'm sure we have recorded this forum, this was televised, so people who have been watching, thank you for, to them, as well as we will be posting the recordings on our website as well as on the social media, so we'll have an immense reach, where people will be able to look at your views and come out and vote as per their... One thing I can say is, such a diversity what you bring in your views, and even if the other, even the candidate who may not win, their views will be adapted, I'm sure, by the candidates who won. So, that's what the beauty of this is. That's why we have elections, that's why we have so many, so many good candidates. So, thank you again. We look forward. Elections are on April 4th. We ask everyone to please, please exercise your vote, right to vote. This is very important. Our lives are governed by the local system, the local bodies, the local administration, more than the federal or the state. We need to be engaged, we need to work with our community. As it has been repeated here, let's get engaged from the minority community's perspective. We have to come out and be involved as well. So, thank you for what you do. And from the India Day, as has been mentioned many times, India Day is on August 13th. We look everyone to come, and we'll be an even better show from last year. Thank you again. Thank you.[1776.35][1776.35]